Good morning, everyone. We're going live now.
Thank you, Ms. Hoskins, and good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Napa County Board of Supervisors meeting for this morning, January 14, 2025. Can we have roll call, please?
Vice Chair Manfree is absent today. Supervisor Ramos.
Here.
Supervisor Alessio.
Present.
Supervisor Gallagher.
Here.
Chair Katra.
Here. Thank you. And could I ask our Sheriff Oscar Ortiz to lead us in the pledge?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end to its being.
And I believe it's time for the pet of the week.
We need walk-on music this morning for Rocky. What a beautiful dog, and I will let you tell us about him. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much. So this handsome boy is Rocky. He came to us in June. He came as a stray from Napa City Limits. He has been amazing while he's at the shelter. He goes into playgroups with multiple different dogs. We estimate him to be a lab mix, around six years old. He is neutered. We have a wonderful program. It's called a foster-at-night program, where you can sign up and you can take a dog home for the night to give him a break from the shelter. We have an amazing volunteer who took him home. And in true lab fashion, he beelined it straight for the pool, jumped in, and just had the best time. He loves tennis balls, playing fetch. That's really what he lives for. That's his passion. But he is just an amazing dog. And I just, I don't know why he hasn't been adopted yet, but this is Rocky. And as you can see, quite a character.
Wonderful, and I think he's showing off all his skills for us. And also, as a reminder, this week, adoption fees will be waived for anyone who's interested in adopting Rocky, so please come by the animal shelter and get to know him. Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to proclamations and commendations. We have two proclamations this morning that I will first announce, and then I will ask for a vote of the board approval of them. We have a proclamation recognizing January 2025 as Positive Parenting Month, and we also have a proclamation recognizing Supervisor Joelle Gallagher for her service and accomplishments as board chair. Could I have a motion?
Motion to approve both.
And second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so I will go ahead and get started with the one for Supervisor Gallagher. And I'm just gonna read it from here, since you're right here. "In 2024, First District Supervisor Joelle Gallagher served as Chair of the Napa County Board of Supervisors, providing thoughtful leadership and working collaboratively with fellow board members to achieve important milestones for the county. She has demonstrated unwavering commitment to vital social causes by initiating the inaugural Harvey Milk Day at the county administrative building, which featured the proud raising of the pride flag at both the county administrations and HHSA buildings, celebrating inclusivity and diversity in our community. And reaffirming the board's commitment to public safety, Napa County has made historic investments in wildfire prevention under her watch, including the largest wildfire prevention funding in the county's history, 17.5 million in 2024, focused on increasing fire resilience and improving means of egress and fuel load reduction in at-risk service communities. And recognizing the importance of safety net services, Chair Gallagher led the board in awarding $15.8 million in Tobacco Master Settlement Agreement, Mental Health Services Act, and opioid settlement funds to support community health projects addressing critical needs in health services, housing, behavioral health, and economic stability, ensuring Napa County continues to prioritize the health and well-being of its residents. And finally, in a continued commitment to mental health services, Chair Gallagher supported the launch of the Mental Health Diversion Program, a collaborative effort between Napa County HHSA, the Court, Probation, Public Defender, District Attorney, and County Council to divert individuals with mental health needs from the criminal justice system to treatment and rehabilitation, ensuring sufficient oversight and maintaining the integrity of the diversion process. Therefore, be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this 14th day of January, does hereby commend and express sincere gratitude to Supervisor Joelle Gallagher for her exemplary leadership, collaborative spirit, and steadfast commitment to the county during her tenure as Chair of the Board." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I've enjoyed, as I said before, being the chair and have a lot of excitement for what's to come in the next few years, and I'm very happy to pass along the chairmanship to Supervisor Katra. So I'm going to present the next proclamation, and I'm gonna do it from the podium. And if I could ask, I think, Maria Chavez, and I'm not sure who's here from Cope, but I think we'll get you, and Deborah Wickington, come on up to the podium.
Great, so we have some friends from Cope Family Center here to receive this, and I'm gonna read it, and then if you'd like to say a few words? Okay, great. All right, so it's Positive Parenting Awareness Month, January 2025. Whereas raising children and youth to become healthy, confident, capable individuals is the most important job parents and caregivers have, and whereas the quality of parenting or caregiving is a powerful predictor of future social, emotional, and physical health, and families come in many forms with children raised by parents, grandparents, foster parents, family members, and other caregivers. And whereas the pandemic, climate crisis, and racial injustices have exacerbated economic insecurity, mental health challenges, domestic violence, discrimination, and other trauma experienced by families, particularly Black, Indigenous, Latinx, Asian, and other families of color. And whereas positive parenting is a protective factor that prevents and heals adverse childhood experiences which impact lifelong health and well-being and occur in the context of adverse community environments that lack equity. And whereas families in Napa County can receive support from positive parenting programs, including the Triple P Positive Parenting Program, an evidence-based program available thanks to a partnership between Napa County Health and Human Services, Parents Can, Cope Family Center, Child Start, and the Up Valley Family Centers. And whereas Triple P has benefited over 20,000 parents, caregivers, youth, and children in Napa since 2017 through proven strategies to strengthen relationships, promote children's development, and handle parenting challenges. And whereas families in Napa County can also receive support for raising healthy, thriving children from high-quality programs offering home visiting, early learning and care, after-school care, preventative health and dental care, behavioral health care, economic support, other basic needs, and more. And whereas everyone can play a vital role in supporting parents and caregivers to raise happy, healthy children, and during the month of January, Napa County Triple P Collaborative Partners and many others will be increasing awareness of the importance. Now therefore be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this 14th day of January 2025, does hereby recognize January 2025 as Positive Parenting Awareness Month in Napa County. We commend the work and mission of Cope Family Center, Parents Can, and the Triple P Collaborative Program, and encourage all residents to join us in this recognition and reach out to learn more.
Thank you all. I'm Deborah Wickington with Cope Family Center. So good morning, and thank you guys for being here. I just want to start by thanking the Napa County Board of Supervisors for recognizing January Positive Parenting Month and your commitment to supporting Napa families. Raising children is sacred work, vital to the health of our future society. The quality of caregiving, starting before birth, directly shapes children's social, emotional, and physical well-being. Yet too often, we overlook the vital role that parents and caregivers play in our communities. Many face overwhelming stress, with nearly half reporting that it affects their ability to function. Many, but despite this, many of these challenges, positive parenting through safe, stable, and nurturing relationships has been proven to protect against negative outcomes like mental illness and violence.
Now, more than ever, we must support families by recognizing the importance of parenting, providing resources, and building networks of support, especially in underserved communities, as a key resource in the Triple P Positive Parenting Program, which equips parents and caregivers with the tools to build confidence, manage behavior, and strengthen relationships. This program offers interventions for families of children with, of young children, teenagers, and families with children with special needs, empowering caregivers to create nurturing environments where children can thrive. Positive Parenting Awareness Month reminds us to honor caregivers and invest in programs like Triple P, Triple P, excuse me, that help families to thrive and succeed. Let us work together to build stronger communities for all. This work is made possible by the dedicated community partners, including the Napa County Triple P Collaborative and organizations like Child Start, Parents Can, Cope Family Centers, and Up Valley Family Centers, and we have a number of representatives here today. So together, we play a critical role in strengthening families. So all community partners that came in and families who've received services, if you wouldn't mind standing.
And I'd love to ask all of you to come to the front, and we can take a photo. And I wanted to say thanks to you both for coming here to speak today. You know, a proclamation is a piece of paper, but when you can come share a little bit more and help educate the community about the services you're offering, it's better for everyone, so thank you.
And Cope stores are always open, so if anybody wants more, just come on in.
Terrific. Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for helping us through that. Next, we will move on to the items on our agenda. We have no special district items, so we'll move to item six, the consent calendar. We have items 6A through 6T. Do we have any board comments or requests to pull items from the calendar? Do we have any public comment in the room or on the phone lines? No? Okay, then I will look for a motion.
I'll move to approve consent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to item seven, public comment. Now we'll take public comment for anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda this morning. Anyone in the room or on the phones? Okay. We're getting to our business quickly here. Agenda item number eight, Board of Supervisors Reports and Announcements. I will turn to my colleagues and find out if anyone has an update or announcement to share. Supervisor Gallagher.
Okay, I'm looking for my notes. I'm sorry. You guys are going really fast, so let me get there. One thing, I had a couple things. One was, we had talked, I think, I don't know if it last year or the year before, but I wanted to bring it back to us. to discuss the idea of lowering the high, the top limit of the camp, of campaign contributions. We've kind of, we discussed it a little off and on, and had the staff come to us with some information, but we never really moved forward in terms of setting a different limit. So I'd like to bring that, see if the CEO can bring that back to us at some point, or whoever has to bring it back to us to do that.
Do you, would you like a presentation on what the current limits are?
I think we had that presentation before, but I would imagine that would be part of the presentation. I'd like to see what language it would have to look like in order to make those changes, and also find out, you know, what the logistics and, you know, moving forward, what the next steps would be, I guess I would say, like, how would we do that?
Okay, so, yes, ma'am, we'll bring back an item, allowing you to understand the process and how to go about it.
Right.
Not necessarily an item where staff is recommending a particular.
A particular amount. I think we maybe just need to discuss it because we have a new board now, and so I think that would be appropriate. Great, thank you. The other thing I wanted to mention, we are going to be, later in the agenda, appointing an ad hoc committee, an inclusivity committee, as a result of our statement that we made in December. I did want to say, though, that the appointment of that does not preclude action happening on the part of our departments and our administration. I think that there is a lot of work that can be done. The ad hoc committee essentially is to give the flexibility to the board to be involved in the work and bring the county and community together. But I expect that the county departments are empowered to continue to do their jobs, to collaborate, and work with other departments, and, for example, provide the training that's necessary to staff. I know that we will be receiving a lot of questions and comments from our clients and the public, and I want to make sure staff is ready and able to answer questions and feel comfortable answering questions. I think that if we take a look at what San Mateo County has done, they've provided some great examples. There are a lot of resources on their website. I'd like to see us with sort of very easy and clear access to rapid response. There's the North Bay Rapid Response Program. There are phone numbers people can call. There are downloadable cards, the Know Your Rights Cards, all of those things that could be readily available on our website, as well as a toolkit, places to get legal services, helping families plan for emergencies. I think that it's really important, too, that we have some kind of a, I wouldn't necessarily call it a campaign, but we have maybe posters or other things in our county offices and in our, the offices of many of our partners that make it clear that they are in a safe space, and give access to resources, phone numbers, et cetera. FAQs, you know, so people can readily get their questions answered. I think there's a lot happening in other counties, and I'd like to see those things happening here. It's not a matter of having to wait for an ad hoc committee. The departments are empowered to continue to do their jobs, and their jobs are, you know, partly to protect and support their clients. So I'd like to just see things happening. You know, it doesn't need to be approved by the board. I noticed in San Mateo County, they have an Office of Community Affairs. We don't necessarily have that. To me, that seems like maybe it's a combination of our CEO's department and our, you know, and communications. But I think we need to kind of figure out that structure here. How is the work going to get done and who's going to do it? And it really does involve all of the departments. It's not just about our clients that seek out HHSA services. It's really about everyone that, you know, we have people of varying immigration status in the community who access all kinds of programs and are interacting at all levels with county government. So everyone needs to be aware of how they're interacting with the public and able to answer the questions and get people the resources they need. So I just don't want, you know, the perfect to be the enemy of the good. So it's kind of like, get started, and we can iterate as we need to, and we can update materials and update information. But it's really, really important that we were active and we're out there getting the work done, and we're doing all the prep that we need to do. So that's just a comment, and that's it. I think I'm done.
All right, thank you, Chair Gallagher. Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you. I just wanted to add for staff on the requested item by Supervisor Gallagher, we had a presentation in 2020 before the new limits went in for January of '21, where we defaulted to the state amounts, and we changed one part, which was the personal loan amount to each campaign. That is our one different section within Napa County. And all of the procedures on how to change that were given during that presentation. So that could just be, I agree, it's a good refresher for all of us to go through that again and know what those limitations would be. And I think that my request would be to add the new changes that the Levine Act changes that happened last year, because we did receive a memo on that. But I think it would really be good to go through recusal process on Levine Act at the same time, and consider whether we want to integrate any changes on the Levine Act as they are corollaries to each other.
Thank you, Supervisor Ramos. Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you, Chair. Just for clarification, in terms of Supervisor Gallagher, your request for staffer training, staff training, and more community education on immigration and the programs that are here to support our residents. I support that idea, I think that's great. I think anytime we can educate ourselves, educate our staff, educate our community, let people know the services that are available and what's legally available for them. I think that's always a best plan forward. But in that, do you want staff to come back and report back to us? Do you want some measurable ideas and steps forward, and then outcomes to come back to the board so we have an understanding that we're making improvements in this area?
Chair, so.
Yeah, actually.
Let's discuss it.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Zalini, can you help us?
I'm sorry, have I crossed the line?
Yeah, we do have a little bit difficult. This isn't on the agenda today.
Correct. Oh, I guess, can we bring that back? I mean, okay, I guess I'm just asking for clarification. Maybe we need to, I don't know, do we need to bring it to the agenda? I guess maybe that's what I need to ask Supervisor Gallagher, or just let the comments.
We could do a future agenda item, that's possible.
Chair, if I may make a suggestion here.
Please.
I think that we've had a sufficient referral to staff at this point, and we should allow our CEO to decide whether that's going to be one-on-one communications with each board member, or if in fact there is an appropriation needed. Only in the event that there is an appropriation needed, we'd need to come back to this board.
CEO, I'll sup, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I heard Supervisor Gallagher, and I think our department heads sitting in the back heard, and we will collaborate and work together to do what we can. On top of everything we do, obviously, we make sure our safety net and our safety net services services to the disadvantaged, and everybody in between are as robust as they can be. And we'll make sure that we're going above and beyond. And appreciate the comments from Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you, and thanks to my colleagues for checking in on that, too. My comment this morning has to do with the devastation that's happening in Los Angeles. Just wanted to acknowledge the pain and suffering that those communities are going through, and that many here in Napa County have, you know, experienced similar loss in the 2017 and 2020 fires. I wanted to say thank you to our Napa County Fire Department staff, both paid and volunteer, who are, have been deployed down there and are there with our engines, supporting the communities and the firefighters down there. And I know that many staff, including our CEO, our county council, our fire administrator, have already been in touch with officials in Los Angeles to provide support and, you know, lessons that we've learned here. So I want to thank you for that. Fire Administrator Shu, I appreciate your recent letter to the editor, kind of setting out the steps that our county has taken, because this is an ongoing concern for our community as well, and a reminder of how much work has happened in the county, too. So, one thing I did want to ask about is if we could, this board could get copies of the after-action reports from the 2017 and 2020 fires. Supervisor Ramos, I'm sure you have seen those and have a lot of familiarity, but the rest of us, the four folks who were not here in those fires, I think it would be really helpful to have that documentation. And also, if I could ask for a referral to have Mr. Shu, at some point, give us a brief presentation on, you know, those after-action reports and a kind of a gloss on, because you are also not with the county at that point, too. So it would be helpful to know what you see in those reports that we should continue to think about. So, wanted to get that out. And again, thank you to everyone who's down there in support of those fire efforts. Okay, with that, we will turn to the next item on our agenda. We have, we have no discussion of items pulled from the consent calendar. We have no administrative items for the special district. That will bring us to item 11A, which is to appoint District Two Supervisor Liz Alessio's nomination of Walt Brooks, and District Four Supervisor Amber Manfree's nomination of Pete Richmond to the Napa County Planning Commission. The terms of office commence immediately and run co-terminus with the terms of District Two Supervisor Liz Alessio until December 31, 2028, and District Four Supervisor Amber Manfree, December 31, 2028. So I first want to say a thank you to all the applicants who've applied. It takes pluck to turn in an application, and I appreciate everyone's willingness to participate and serve. So I hope if you did apply and you have not been appointed, that you will look for other opportunities to volunteer and provide support for the county. We had applicants Walter Brooks, Alan Chuck Delario, Pete Richmond, and Gary Woodruff. So thanks to all four. And then I wanted to offer Supervisor Alessio the chance to make a nomination and make a statement. And we don't have Supervisor Manfree here today, but I've asked Supervisor Gallagher if she would be willing to make a statement. So I will first turn to you, Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you, Chair. This is a big decision, and it's a big, it's a big ask of anybody in our community to step in and be a planning commissioner, especially for the county, county-wide, it's a big responsibility. And it has great influence on the decisions here on the board, and that ripples out back to the community. I really was seeking somebody that would have a balanced approach, somebody that had lived experience, both in, both in the sciences, in agriculture, in farming, in the wine industry. Somebody who has a temperament that people just really enjoy working with, somebody who will listen, and that can really help and manage complex situations and problem-solving. And of course, that will represent the county of Napa. When I met Walt Brooks some years ago, you know, he was somebody that I was curious about. I didn't know Walt very well, frankly. But as I learned and inquired more about Walt, a couple of things I heard is, one, yes, he really is a rocket scientist. And I don't know if he's ever written a book, but I think that would be really cool to hear about what you've done during your time with NASA. But that you're a very thoughtful person and a very caring person, that people respect you. I did inquire across the county and different organizations and constituencies, and everybody likes Walt Brooks. And so I just thought he was a great fit. And again, with the 10 years of experience of being a farmer here in Napa, and agriculture, and winemaking, the years of experience, he's volunteered, he was on the executive board for the Vine Trail, which is also really, I think, is great, as we look at healthy communities, multi-mode transportation. He spent years on the board of the grape growers. And by the way, he stepped off the board of the Vine Trail to be, for this position. He didn't want there to be any conflicts. And I was also looking for that, for somebody that wouldn't have to conflict out, and who'd be committed to attending and be part of, part of the planning, you know, commission schedule. So I feel very fortunate. There are a lot of good applicants. I do also thank the other applicants. I think Pete Richmond, an excellent. We're very fortunate to have Pete Richmond, too, I'm just going to say that. To think that we have Pete and Walt to add their knowledge on the planning commission, I'm beyond thrilled. So on that, I'd like to nominate Walt Brooks to the planning commission as District Two Representative.
Wonderful, thank you. Supervisor Gallagher.
Okay, well, I don't know if everybody, everybody loves Pete, but I do. But that wasn't required. So Pete Richmond really is an icon in the industry. I know he's rolling his eyes when I say that, but he is. He served in numerous leadership positions in the community, not just in the farming community, Community Foundation, Olay Health, Olay Health Foundation, Ag for Youth. I mean, everywhere this guy goes, you know, there is, there's so much success that he brings to an organization. So I love the way that Pete is a straight talker. You know, he doesn't, he doesn't talk to talk, but what he says, people pay attention to, because he will be straightforward, he will be honest, and he is incredibly knowledgeable. He's currently the president of the Napa Valley Grape Growers Association. He has mentored many people in the farming community and has decades of experience in the industry, not just working with vineyard development, et cetera, but really working hard with farmworkers, really finding ways. I believe Pete was probably one of the founders of the Farmworker Foundation. So looking for ways to make sure that our workforce is cared for, supported, is trained well. And really, really, kudos to Pete for the level of workforce development that he has done, and the great example that he has set for the industry in terms of both how to, how to work well and what the best practices are with your employees and your farmworkers, but also what are the best sustainable practices to use in the vineyard. He's very, very cognizant of the inner relationship between the environment and farming. And I think that he's going to be able to make some very well-informed decisions. His level of skill, talent, and experience make him a perfect candidate for the planning commission. I am super excited that Pete is going to be on the planning commission. And, you know, Supervisor Cottrell and I, having both served, we know it's a big job, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of reading, it's a lot of traveling to sites, and doing a lot of field trips. But, you know, Pete kind of knows the valley like the back of his hand. So I think every time he gets invited, he's going to be like, oh yeah, I remember that place. And I think that he's just going to be an awesome representative, and also a great collaborator with the rest of the planning commissioners. So very, very excited that he's going to be joining that team.
Thanks to you both for your comments. I think it's wonderful to have the opportunity for the community to get to hear a little bit more about who will be serving as planning commissioner. So with that, I will open it up to any public comment. Do we have anyone on the phones or in the room? I would ask if the applicants want to make a statement.
I'm Walt Brooks, the nominee. And I just want to express my deep. thanks to Liz for, uh, approaching me and giving me this opportunity to serve the community. My wife and I moved here 25 years ago with the intent of becoming involved in the wine industry, started producing wine, grew commercially, uh, until a few years ago, um, and, but this has felt like home to us, like no other place we've lived in our lives, and we wanted to give back to the community, and my wife has been doing that steadily, and through the Vine Trail and through the grape growers, and working with Pete in particular, we, we feel like we've been able to do this. But, uh, I also agree, I think, I think this position gives a, a chance to really help set direction for the, the valley and the way we sustainably grow the valley and increase, you know, this premier wine district's impact on, on, on the United States and the world. So I'm super excited to be able to do this. Uh, I also find it really interesting, since I think Pete will be up here and, and what Supervisor Gallagher said, my very first harvest, I got all jammed up, and who showed up to bail me out but Pete Richmond 25 years ago with his crew and his weigh scales and, and got my first harvest in. So I, I'm very excited to be working with you, th- this very historic board that you have, and the other planning commissioners, and Pete in particular. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Walt.
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank Supervisor Manfree for the nomination, and thank all of you as well, Board of Supervisors. Um, my wife and I have lived in Napa for 35 years. I did not grow up here. My mother graduated from Napa High in 1942, my grandmother graduated from Napa High in 1906. My family arrived here in 1849 and promptly lost all their money, and I always like to say, after 175 years, we have a 1,500 square foot house to show for it. But I'm actually probably one of the few people who's excited to work on the general plan. Um, I know what it's gonna take, but I think this is an opportunity for us, uh, to come together and really guide our county on the process going forward. I also want to say, it's wonderful to have such nice things said about you in front of your wife and daughter, who sometimes don't love you. So thank you, Supervisor Gallagher, and, um, I think mostly, my wife is most excited about this, because I'm gonna have to buy some adult clothes finally, so, so thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks to you both, thanks to you both. So with that, uh, we have no other public comment. I will turn to my colleagues for a motion.
I will, uh, go ahead and make a motion to, uh, appoint the recommended nominations of Walt Brooks for District Two and Pete Richmond for District Four as planning commissioners to serve the same term as their respective district supervisors.
I'll second. Well summarized, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. So at this time, what we will do is we will go ahead and ask both applicants to, uh, come back up, and, um, our clerk, Neha Hoskins, will swear you in.
Pete, I got you here. Before you do that, you're gonna raise your right hand, you're gonna read this little paragraph here. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Pete Richmond. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I will bear the true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will and fairly discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. I, Walter Brooks, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations to you both. Thanks, everyone. We will now move on to item 11B, and that item is an approval of the formation of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Inclusivity and a designation of two supervisors to serve on that committee. So I'd like to welcome Andrew Mize. Good morning.
My name's Andrew Mize, I'm the Legislative and Policy Analyst for your board. Um, I'm here based on the December 17th referral of your board to county staff to, uh, bring back an item forming an exa, an ad hoc committee on inclusivity. Staff's recommendation here is to approve formation of an ad hoc committee on inclusivity, on inclusivity consisting solely of no more than two members of the Board of Supervisors, such that the committee falls within the exception to the Brown Act for ad hoc committees. Staff has two reasons for this recommendation. First, uh, it permits the committee a broad scope. It, the, the committee will be able to meet as needed to discuss a broad range of issues that may arise, and the second reason is responsiveness. Uh, this structure permits a meeting to occur very quickly, including if necessary, on the same day that staffed, our staffer informed, relevant events. I have two quick asides, if I may, before we wrap. First, some statewide news, California Democrats over the weekend reached an agreement, uh, that will appropriate funding for the following four purposes. Uh, the first is Department of Justice litigation, um, against the federal government. The proposal does require an annual report outlining costs for outside counsel and administrative taken, actions taken to mitigate the impact of federal actions. Presumably, what did we do to avoid litigation, uh, before incurring this costly, uh, outside counsel? Second, um, civil legal services grants for legal services projects and support centers to help indigent persons at risk of detention, deportation, eviction, wage theft, intimate partner violence, and other actions that put their safety at risk as a result of potential or actual federal actions. Uh, third, immigration defense-related state services grants and contracts. This will be money for the Department of Social Services to contract with or provide grants to legal services organizations. This one's specifically about removal defense services. And then finally, some general legal services support and augmentation to the existing California Access to Justice Grants Program. Uh, amounts are not final yet, so I'm not going to report those today. We'll know more once the, uh, Assembly considers it later today. And the other side about some internal things that we're doing that are related to this. First, uh, Napa County's communications team creating a page on the website as requested by your board on December 17th, titled, titled Valuing Supporting and Protecting Marginalized Communities. This webpage is easily accessible from the front page of the website, and will continue to be updated with web resources working in conjunction with the ad hoc committee. Second internally, or second internal note, in addition to those webpage updates, I want to note that I am already working with HHSA and with county council, uh, using San Mateo County as a model to develop materials and a staff toolkit with expected completion before January 21st. So, moving to next steps, uh, should the board choose to follow this recommendation, it will approve formation of an ad hoc committee on, and appoint two members of the board to serve on the committee. Staff, um, recommends, uh, this action moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna move to public comment right now. Do we have anyone in the room or on the phones who would like to make a comment at this point? Okay, if not, I will close public comment, and I will bring it back to the board for discussion. Are there comments? And that is Supervisor Gallagher.
Um, yes, thank you, and thank you, Andrew, for the presentation. Um, I'd be happy to serve on the ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallagher. I will see if there's other interest here as well. Supervisor Ramos.
I would be happy to serve on the ad hoc committee with Supervisor Gallagher.
Okay, terrific. So we have two volunteers, we will take that, and so we can make as a single motion and approval of the creation of the committee and the appointment of the two supervisors to that committee. So is there a motion?
So moved.
I will second that motion, and we will go ahead, and, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks to you both, and thank you, Mr. Mize, for the report. We have no special districts for public hearing on, so this brings us to item 13A, a public hearing on Sentinel LLC slash Engle Nook Residence Appeal, and the item, the requested item is to move, to continue the public hearing for an appeal filed by Water Audit California to the Napa County Planning Commission's decision on November 15th, 2023, to approve a use permit exception to the conservation regulations filed by Adobe Associates on behalf of Nebam Cobala Estate Winery LP to allow a private access road to encroach into the creek setback in order to serve existing agricultural structures and a potential future residence. This item was continued from December 17th, and staff is requesting a continuance to January 28th. Good morning, Ms. Cahill.
Good morning. Kelly Cahill, representing Planning, Building, and Environmental Services. Thank you for the introduction, Chair Cottrell, Supervisors. We are actually going to ask for a continuance to February 25th. After finalizing the staff report, uh, the parties reached out and requested February 25th as being a better date. So instead of January 28th, we're requesting a continuance to February 25th.
Thank you. And at this point, I will ask if there's any public comments on, on the topic of the continuance? Anyone in the room or on the phones? Okay, I will close public comment, and I will bring it back to the board for comments, discussion. Supervisor Ramos.
I'll make the motion that we continue to staff's date of February?
25th.
25th.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, item 14 is closed session, so at this point, let's see, we will go into closed session, or do you want me to read the items that will be, you will do that. Your turn, Mr. Zalani.
Yes, good morning. Um, we have two items on the agenda for closed session. The first one, item 14A, it was for a public employee performance evaluation of our county executive officer. My understanding is that is coming off calendar, and we are not going to hear that today. Um, item 14B is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 involving the case known as Alexis Davenport versus County of Napa, with the case numbers as indicated on the agenda.
All right, so we will go ahead and recess to our closed session. All right, so we will go ahead and recess to our closed session. All right, so we will go ahead and recess to our closed session.